Evening, everyone. This is February 2nd, town of Ankrum playing. Jay, can you please call the roll first? Bob Roach here. Aaron Robertson.
I'm here.
Palmer Irvin.
Yeah.
Colleen Muntz.
Yeah.
Philip Pacht.
No, no, no. Okay, so we have four members present in the building, which constitutes a quorum. So we can go ahead with the meeting. We have one member who's on Zoom who is able to vote. And the first thing we have to do is adopt the resolution. And I will not read the entire resolution, but I'll give you a brief overview of what we. The state has passed the law to allow planning boards, town boards, zoning boards to have what they call a hybrid meeting. Hybrid meeting allows certain members of the board, regardless of what it is, to be present at the location where the public hearing is being held. The quorum has to be established at that location. For a seven-member board, we need to have four members present for a forum to allow the meeting to go on. So we're in compliance with that part. So this law gives us the ability to conduct hybrid meetings and allow certain members, for good reason, to zoom into the meeting and not have to be present. But as I already said, the quorum, one, two, three, four, have to be here to establish the start of the meeting. So as all the members read the law.
I don't think we're.
What's about?
Who can vote?
I thought I read that.
I just skimmed it.
You saw it?
Yeah, I read.
Yeah.
Philip Pacht is showing. Yeah, I believe that is. So, um, any other questions on the resolution?
It's actually under that.
So there are no other questions. We need to take a roll call vote. Good. Good. In favor? Bob Roach? Palmer Irving? Colleen Muntz?
Yes.
And. I want the people on Zoom. Aaron Robertson?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I vote yes, too, if you can hear me. This is Philip.
All right, so the. The resolution passes six, then with one member. Do you sign that? Second by. Okay. Moving on, next order of business is approvals of the January 5th minutes. Is everybody got an opportunity to read them and review them? Any comments, corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So for me, that was a yes.
Okay, so correspondence. Um, the first thing is that ONG is not on the agenda. We heard that from John Lyons, he still has not completed the legal analysis on the question that planning board asked regarding the ONG application. I also presented at the town board meeting. The chair of the planning board is going to be general, Aaron is going to be vice chair. Colleen and Philip are now regular members. And the. Meetings will be the first Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM here at the Ankrum Town Hall. And then the reschedule was also approved as amended following the January 5th meeting. The CBA meeting date has not been set yet. Um, hopefully that will be done in two weeks. I will be reaching out to Nan shortly to see if we can schedule a training, probably for March or through. It seems like. Her presenting via Zoom and then folks electing whether they wish to attend here at the town hall with some refreshments for. Seems to be the best thing. Uh, we'll probably look next month or the following month. So I believe it's also going to be in March 2nd or. April 6th as potential dates.
That one, John?
Um, the last thing was that you did just recently get an interview. And the proposed candidate will also be available later on in the meeting so that they can answer any questions. And then we'll kind of have a discussion about whether to recommend an appointment to the topic.
So that'll be at the end of. And that's it? Okay, conflict check. Okay, I have a conflict check. I have a conflict with the 132 Carson Road, his end patient last month. So I have to reprove myself from this application. But what it does is it causes us to have to adjourn and reschedule this application for March meeting. Because if I reprove myself, we then do not have a farm. So anybody interested in 132 Carson Road, it will not be heard tonight. Hopefully it'll be heard on the, at the March 2nd. That being said, anybody else? That's it? Brando, about a public hearing. Did you come up and give us a brief overview?
This is for a short-term rental application in 290 Undermount Road. Uh, we went through the first part of the hearing. Uh, it's last month, and so is the public hearing because we're on the side of an agricultural area. So we had to do a short form environmental statement. There's no development on the property. Uh, limiting the rental to six people, which is less than a septic handles. Any questions?
Hey, Jay. So first, a motion to open. Anybody from the public have any questions or concerns?
I'll make a motion.
And the second? Anyone speak now? Not hearing, not seeing? Make a motion?
Also public hearing.
Anybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're back to the board.
The sketch plan was approved and and current planning board was designated as the lead agency. So. Environment.
Have a motion. Uh, see what?
What's second?
There's a negative.
Negative, yeah, for a negative.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the application. For short-term rental, it stood for one year. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. There's not my phone. I just want to include everybody. You still there? Yeah, Aaron, yeah, she's still there. Did she, I didn't hear her vote. Did she vote? One of them?
I voted.
This is Aaron. I'm having a lot of trouble hearing you guys. If you're looking for my vote, that was a yes.
Your approval. You're gonna hang around?
Yeah. Yes.
All right, next application.
So the launch up resolution I had drafted it previously. Um, we reached out to David Joyce and due to insurance liability, he is not able to sign on on the driveways. So as a result, it was recommended that we have the burden enforcement officer sign off on the motorway. If that is acceptable to all of you, then Joe can sign that.
Yeah, then fire marshal in the future will have to advise Ed if there's any issues. So we'll have to forward applications initially to the fire marshal through Ed, so we don't have this. This is kind of a little bit of a difficulty. So we're going to leave, there were two things, were the turnoffs um, and the turnaround at the top of the driveway. So um, we're going to rely on Ed Ferrato, the building inspector, to make the decision on whether they comply with the. If there's any major change, then they'll have to come back here for amendment. So I think that's the best way to handle it at this point because we didn't get the information in time. We already voted approved, so. That being said, motion.
To sign the resolution.
Motion. It was already.
We have, we have two. We have, uh, we have one prior approval. The, the, the timing ran out to file the map. And that was because we were trying to do the other one at the same time. The farm is in a trust and to take it out of the trust is a, a difficult process. So both of them were going to happen at the same time. So I'll go along with the newer one that we didn't get the approval for first. That was originally a subdivision up on Prospect Hill Farm. Once the applicant posted the public hearing for the subdivision, uh, two of the neighbors got together and decided that they'd like to purchase the property. Uh, so instead of the subdivision, it then turned back to a lotline alteration, eliminating a lot. And so we're starting with, with three lots. Uh, two of them are getting bigger and one's getting smaller, no new lots.
Aaron, you can hear me? I'm being loud enough for you? One will be added to Davey's property. Uh, and parcel B, which is 2.3, will be added to Ramsden's property. And that will eliminate all of what Saskia owns of farm on that side, which is not included in the Columbia County, uh, DLC. Uh, that originally the farm gave conservation event, that was excluded out of the conservation event a few years ago. The during subdivision process, one of the things that Aaron wanted to see was the stream and a, a stream buffer note, which is on the map, and we discussed last meeting. Um, because the lotline alteration, uh, they don't need septic, they don't need driveway approval or anything like that. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments and answer appropriately.
Was parcel B a lot prior?
So.
Parcel B.
Parcel B is part of the main farm, so it's part of this and that is part of it. But this is remaining lands.
How did you get there?
There was always part of the farm. Now, back in the seventies, they still provided that off, so.
Well, this was standing alone?
Yes, it's held.
Oh, so this is a new one?
That's a new one, yeah. And then these, these were original lines that are different when we.
We're not creating a lot, it's a lot.
It gives a little more protection. Originally, the outside was here and you definitely weren't going to be able to have some sort of visibility and nobody's.
So these, these were previously. I don't have any problem with.
War. Be. Well, well. I don't believe so. The motion for a lot line adjustment, second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the, and the second one was on Chase Road. Which was. We believe John's signature is not on it anymore. But again, the map needs to be filed in 61 days, otherwise if it doesn't happen, that was almost a year ago now.
We had to reach.
Decided that, uh, the farm that we were talking about went across the street here like this. And this was included in the farm, which there's a wet spot. So when this was part of the main farm here. Now, sir, this was in the early 1800s. Then afterwards, the railroad comes through and splits it apart, right? And that's why you have this weird line here because this part's along the railroad bed, but they still have this little piece. So what they decided is instead of Saskia owning it, uh, some of it is going to Chase Home Farm here and some of it's going to Burling Park here. So this little area, parcel 1C and 1D is going to Burling Park. This portion of it. Yeah. Just cleaning everything up.
I don't see any issues. Everybody have any questions, thoughts? Okay, we'll attend the motions for lot line adjustment. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Blue people.
Aye.
Aye, I'm here, aye.
Didn't you stand?
No.
Why not?
You want me to just wait until the meeting's over and I'll stay with Dennis anyway, so.
Well, a lot of. Please come forward.
How you guys doing? I am here to do my STR application. This is my first time here. I met with Jay about six weeks ago. He told me to show up.
Okay.
Asking question is 14 East Ancom Road, Marie McDermott's old house.
Okay, do you have any paperwork? Um, I, I do have the full paperwork that was emailed to you. I have a copy here, but um, we do need to amend the SDA.
Yes.
So with your permission, I'll excuse myself so I can print that out.
Okay.
Do I follow you?
No.
Um, sort of like Terry, it looks bigger.
I don't have that many secrets.
Tell us a little bit about.
Your house and what you're doing.
What you're doing, whether, how many bedrooms, how many people?
It's going to be, it's going to abide, apply by the year rules. It's going to be what, maximum 12 people with like some children? It's a three-bedroom, 12 with children. I think the rules are there's three bedrooms and some kid, people have children, we can get up to 12. That's the max.
But does that comply with your house?
Yes, correct. Um, it's on 20, I guess, 623 acres now. We bought the remaining property from Marie like a few months ago. Um, I grew up in Rhinebeck, off 199, 10 miles from here. I live in right, in, on Long Island. Me and my family wanted to get a house upstate. This is just a simple way to kind of just make it more affordable, that's all. You know the questions?
When Jay gets back, we'll. Yeah, we'll discuss.
You have a.
Colleen, can you fill it in?
Um, so I just, I went through the EAM apper, um, online just to kind of check things off. And I was like, not even know that even though there are certain elements that are, should be checked, yes. It doesn't necessarily really affect the nation, but for people who are. Should be.
Yeah, you did it.
Yeah, it should be.
There's no development, so we're not changing.
Right, right. It's not going to, to affect the overall process, but it should be correct as far as the paperwork. Just that, um, there is a wetlands on the parcel, which is on the northwest corner. Um, and there's also a truck stop, a truck spawning stream on the rear part of the farm. And so that would need to be indicated on the EAM. Or on the EAM form. Um, so it's just that there's a wetland and that. That also the TS3 falls in as a regulated water body for the interstate.
So it's more or less just correcting the, yeah.
Yeah.
So the, the application, the, these items are far from the residence, they won't be affected by the use of the. What, what question is going to be?
Okay, so it would be here, this should be yes.
Well, this is yes.
Well, this is yes. Um, and the other one is. This is actually yes as well. Um, it's, yes, it's the northern one. And yeah, everything else is. Yeah.
The speech three.
Yeah, it should have, it also comes in, um, speaking in the buffer zone. It's not going to probably overall affect the application. Right, right. There's no development plans, but.
This is the first time it's application here, so we need to get the schedule. We need to schedule a public hearing for that.
Okay, so. Are you all confident that we'll be able to amend the, or EAM? So. Start with a determination of completeness.
The motion for completeness of the application.
Other thing, which is a simple fix. I noticed that, I don't think that the adjoining property owners were listed on.
On the.
On the.
Agreed a statement.
Perhaps, but it's, again, it's a simple fix, but it's just a paperwork.
Are, are there, are there property owners within 500 feet? Because it's a big parcel. Is it, is it a?
Like, no, sometimes I think that's partially an artifact of one. Um, I would have to notice. The joint property owners. Because it's a public hearing.
I would say that I know how to identify them and when I was assisting with this application, I did not have on wifi, so I didn't have my computer. I was looking at my phone.
Yeah.
So.
So you'll assist the applicant in getting those on the application votes, yeah.
Yeah.
So. So then can I get the determination of completeness, recognizing that it was the omission of the. The joining. All in favor?
Ayes. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um sketch plan approved. Motion for sketch plan approval.
For a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Sketch plan approval passing six to zero. Lead agency. Need a motion for lead agency to see. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, so. Schedule. A. Public hearing for March second twenty twenty-three at seven P M. At P M, let down hall. Motion. Second.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Schedule the public hearing for March second seven o'clock down hall. Passes six to zero. Done? Yep, okay. Last application, Sigler abbreviated site plan.
No. No.
Okay.
And you know, can you, there's two more. Okay, you remember somebody, my son, they're a little too big. Something that my son and his girlfriend, they split up. Since I'm now in contract to sell the farm, we decided to build a house there. So we're moving the house site and adding a barn.
You did not agree to type plan, you just have something that's.
Yes, but there was a whole. Everything still falls within the original building envelope of when we did the subdivision. Uh, one of the questions that Dennis had was uh. Did we need to come here for site plan approval? Because everything that's being done is already in the building envelope that was depicted on the subdivision map. Um, so we, I was a little confused about that, but happy to make our plan for Dennis at any. It's not exactly the same, buddy. And the other one was a two-story house. This is a one-story house with two car garage on the uh, it makes it longer.
Dennis, where where you um thinking of putting them out? I don't see the well.
I don't know, that'd be a hundred fifty feet away.
Well. Last, well.
Yes, I missed the well.
I think that's gonna be somewhere in this.
I really wanted there, we just moved closer to seven fifty.
Yeah.
So it's cool over here.
This should be a hundred feet. I think he probably had it.
That's gonna be a hundred, well. Yeah. Perk has recommended to go a hundred fifty. So I'm gonna try to go a hundred fifty.
That's kind of location.
Mm-hmm.
And the number of bedrooms in the house?
Three.
A set table size.
I don't say on there, but I. It's up to a four bedroom, so. I thought it was up to a four.
Not just as long as it's covered.
It says up to up to three on the on the health department.
Yeah, it would need to be a twelve fifty tank for four.
Well, I noticed that. It's, we have a hundred feet some. This screen here that flows in virgin arrow. Our current zoning law. It's that we have.
No, doesn't. It used to, doesn't anymore.
But. I don't see how. We could do that. I don't know.
So I guess, I guess that was, that was the issue that I was talking to Dennis about, which really becomes, it becomes difficult in a sense. That this this screen buffer was recently passed within the last couple of months. The subdivision plan of Dennis's was approved. Uh, don't hold me to it. I'm sure I have it on the map, but it was a few years ago. When we did the subdivision, the town of Ancrum zoning law required to put a building envelope on the map. Which the building envelope was on with a hundred foot string buffer, because that's kind of what the planning board wanted at that point. It wasn't even in law, I don't think then. And then along with the building offsets. So everything that every building or structure is falling within the original building envelope that was on the original subdivision plan. Whether it was a one-story house or a two-story house is still falling within that. Um, so I guess that was the confusion that uh that I had and Ed Ferraro had with. Was the site plan actually necessary for an applicant to come in? Dennis would love to come see you guys all the time. Uh, I guess we're trying to figure out the future too, from my knowledge, if somebody comes to me, you know, what what's allowable, what are these required, what's not?
I have a thought. Can you put that in writing?
Yes.
Your your region behind that and. So what do you think if if they ask for? The waiver of the fish we saw. Would we have to make? Is there anything else that they would have to do?
Well, I think I think the waiver is appropriate. I mean, I just kind of sketch the blue line on here that added fifty feet to the buffer. And it basically doesn't leave enough room.
Exactly.
For, you know, reasonable. So, you know, meaning this was approved under the old regulation, wherever they may have been. If you see, you know, if you see the blue line, you can see it's this narrow strip up against the road. Up against the setback line, which would allow for the development, you gotta be cramming. Well, I don't, I don't, I think the waiver is probably. Um, a reasonable solution, so.
Uh, that's what I'm thinking.
This law is already, already exists, correct?
Right, it's already approved.
Right.
And. If if we, yeah, it's like, again, I don't think that's something we'd be enough.
Think of waiver to make the lot usable, because.
Right.
Because already, you wanna make a lot of it nonusable. You know what I mean? It's already created, so. There's one, probably one tiny thing we're gonna have to, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it leaves a very, very small area for development. Not practical tool.
And just, this is just a point, make up reference. It's not going to, I don't think it affects anything. The barn, I think, falls within a hundred foot or a hundred year.
So.
I will be.
Water ever gets up that high. Anchorm is gone.
I'm just playing, I think it does.
Uh, you know, I I can say that if you probably go on the uh, if you probably go on the resource mapping, you know, you're talking about the USGS scale and, you know. You can, you can do that. So what ends up happening, what ends up happening is it does goes to sell. And it triggers, it what ends up happening, Dennis, is that you win the lottery tomorrow and you decide you wanna leave Ancrum and you're going to buy a private island down in the Bahamas. And throw axes down there. Um, and you're gonna sell it and you're gonna sell it and the potential buyer looks at it and it could trigger that, you know, this mapping, which is inaccurate, I'll tell you in front of the get go. Will trigger that it could be in the flood plain. From there, they're gonna have to spend the money to do the report with FEMA, which is a study and it can uh run anywhere. Uh, from five hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars to get a actual certificate, a flood plain certificate that the barn is not in the flood plain. And therefore then banks will issue new buyer uh, whether it be a mortgage, they're not gonna release any money until that is dealt with. So I don't think it really matters the board standard, maybe I'm wrong, uh, but it definitely matters in the future. But again, I just, you know, you're talking about that. These are pretty close together.
Pretty steep, the bank. Um, I wonder.
When you're talking about uh.
I can, I can. That is inaccurate once they are, I know.
And I'd be more concerned as well with residents, but it's the barn.
The only thing I would do, though, was I would.
You wanna show it on the site plan where this is?
No, I mean, you could, but um just on the um. Again, on the paperwork, the short forms just indicate that it it's possible, but I think it's indicated as no. But it is, there is that possibility, so I don't even know, putting a note on the on the plan saying that. It should. Should a new owner, you know, acquired this, they may want to, or you know. Have that map completed. Better, but I don't necessarily think that Mr. Segway needs to do that.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I could not put any on any, on anything, um. Why don't we do something that we've done before where it says any uh future potential will buyer be aware of the support plane? May exist on the property and appropriate actions uh uh be taken. I I gotta know that specify something to that degree.
Just a, yeah, just.
You know the elevation on the one plane. And then you you're kind of indicating that it's worth fifty.
They do, I don't think they have any, do they have details? It's all.
It's the FEMA map. That's what it is, so.
Eventually, eventually they'll get to it. If they stop having all these curtains, they can focus on it and we might get actual.
Seized maps that we can actually use, but yeah. Um, I mean, those are the only.
I know, it's probably down there, probably on the front plane, I mean, you beyond down here, down towards the creek.
Yeah. Yeah.
Up well, that shit.
The water gets that high.
It should, I mean.
It's over the top of the mill.
It would come on the bridge. It'd be over the top of the bridge.
Let me, let's see, I can look at, so you can see what I'm looking at, and I could be odd, like I could be off, because it's not super accurate, but.
They 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 use the USGS contours to do it, so you're talking about nineteen seventy technology that's now.
At one inch.
Yeah, one inch.
Three. My word is developed, so. You see this one? There you go. So the the yellow is is actually what FEMA considers the flood, like the hundred year flood. So it's. It's just, it could be, but it may not be on that. It's very hard to tell.
What's the blue?
The blue, believe it or not, that is, it's a check zone because the rojan is as what they call, it it's a certain fish community. And the check zone is that wide because they want you to make sure that you protect the rojan because these species are sensitive, so. But I'm, I was most concerned by the yellow.
See, you know, I just looking at it, you see, you see the, you see the drain point coming up, so that's gonna be the center, that should be the center of the stream. Even though the tax mats, you know, not in the right placement, that should be the center of the stream, and then this is the other stream coming up.
Right, so which it should.
Yeah, the whole thing should be shifted quite a bit, but you know, again, we are working with the maps that we have.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I was like, I don't know, but.
Okay, so what's the board's pleasure at this point?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Uh, um, I think as far as the waiver, um, we can, we can definitely do that, but I'm wondering about, um, is there any possibility of some mitigation? Which I think we're kind of required to ask for. So, um. Uh, downspout to go into like a rain garden instead of just shedding water off the roof or um planting some more to the buffer, something. Some sort of mitigation.
So I, Dennis, I would, I would, I would say that. It wouldn't be a big cost or anything to you if you had downspouts that went into a uh. A place that released them underground, so the water isn't on top of the soil and going down towards the stream to prevent any uh. Any soil movement. In that sense, to me, you're on a whole knoll of gravel that was moved by a great glacier. That stuff's gonna dissipate uh completely. As soon as it dumps into uh any cavity that that comes off the roof, I wouldn't think that you would need to spend a lot of money or uh you could. Douse that right into the ground, then the percolation rate would be fine to set that. So just a note that states that, Aaron, something, something to that degree?
Well, whatever the board thinks best as far as the mitigation. So a rain garden, um, either a depression. That would capture the water and allow it to perk and whether there's shrubs or grasses or some sort of. Um, and if it is a gravelly mix in there and it will perk, then whether sort of like a um like a dry well, you know, so. And whether that meets the board's approval for mitigation. Um. That's one way of doing it. The other is not mowing all the way into that buffer and letting the buffer kind of grow back or something like that. That's another option. So that it doesn't cost anything to have to buy plants and do stuff like that. You can um leave a strip to let grow back. Are you planning on hanging that that area or is it gonna be lawn?
Probably tall lawn, front dog.
Yeah, so.
Then you got the. The bank going down to the stream with this. Nobody gonna touch that?
Yeah, that's all like trees and shrubs in there. Um. I don't know, whatever everybody thinks is reasonable.
I mean, currently, just a, just a word of that the uh, the brush goes out to the edge of the field, which is pretty much, you can see from the contour lines, the the steep incline at that point, there's. Uh, good hardwood trees, if I remember right, some uh lots of cherry trees uh and quite a few bushes along that. You can remember getting a few ticks and trying to fight through to get to the property line and down to the stream a couple of times, so um. Well, I don't remember any multi floral roses, but uh what is the one that a a bush that comes out early that has a lot of? Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, and like maybe just not mowing. Along the strip along here, it might be just not uh.
Yeah, the house is tight to the buffer, so he's gonna need to roll around.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you need something.
Right.
Also. I'm just gonna say that being in the buffer and that the area of disturbance being uh closer, it's more into that hundred foot. Because you can't just dig that hole for the house. Not go into that buffer another ten or twenty feet. So there should be silt fence and that kind of stuff put on.
Okay, so, uh. With that said, let me just grab my, grab my clipboard, because what? With that said, let me just grab my, grab my clipboard because what Dennis is trying to do is streamline this as he does have a sale. And uh, uh, I, I think I speak for him, I say he wants to make it as quick and pain free as possible. And uh obviously uh adhere to all the laws and his only ordinance. And at the same time, just do what wants to do it right. Uh, so a silt fence plan for, for the building?
I don't know, is it something that can be put in the resolution? Um. That if it's written down that there is, you know, on that east, northeast or whatever as a description? Is that acceptable?
Is that, is that a question for me or for the rest of the board?
Well, kind of for everybody. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to save you time, if you're trying to get this plan approved and not have to go back and. Make changes to the plan, we have to do a resolution this evening. And if it can be a description on the resolution. That you can describe it in words enough to say between the construction zone, the limits of the construction zone, you know? Between the stream so that that excavation soils don't wash down into the stream.
It could be something added.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that I would volunteer to be a committee one. If they refuse, buys the plan, put on it, I won't sign the map, still it complies with what we described here. And whenever he gets the map to the building department.
Right, so they don't have to come back.
They don't have to come back. Is that fair? Is anybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Yep.
And, and then the, uh, there's a quick description about the downspouts and if that's what. Mitigation type that the board wants to do, it can just be a description.
Uh, do you mind if I just read what I have and then the work can read to them. And if they have anything else, uh, so the first thing that uh will be provided is a waiver for the. Hundred and fifty feet to the hundred feet as per the subdivision plan that was approved, uh. We're gonna come out with a construction zone note, which depicts how to mitigate. Uh, certain aspects to protect the uh, the buffer zone. Uh, we are gonna have a note for downspouts and the mitigation of uh water runoff. Into the buffer zone. And we are going to recommend a strip of land uh along the current. Edge of woods as depicted on the map, uh, not be mowed. Um, should we say a width or do we wanna get into that or can we just say a strip? Whether that's five feet or ten feet, probably up to the arm?
Think you should put a dimension on it only because Dennis ever sells a new person.
Okay, well.
There'll be no place to end below, so I, is ten feet safe? Yes, no?
Yeah.
Where were we measuring from, that's all?
From the, from the.
Edge of the, edge of the woods, the brush line.
It still gives you enough room to get around.
He will show, show some physically.
You want to show that as well?
Yeah, it's not a big deal, you know, follow the buffer line, except where the house is, you're gonna go.
Oh, I'll have to know and show it.
Yeah, you've been over.
And also finally, a note depicting the. Hundred year floodplain. May exist and any future owners to take consideration in such floodplain.
Do the calculation for the area of disturbance, your under acre, I did it myself. You're around thirty thousand feet, so just show it because it's consistent.
calculation. Of disturbance.
Even if you take big areas, you're, you're about thirty thousand. You're on the.
And I'll just put that, I'll just put that. All right, try to read it one more time and then uh everybody can agree and then make perhaps make a resolution?
Oh, both for it.
Uh, the plan will have a construction zone note, uh. Uh, to protect the, the buffer, uh, the applicant will supply sufficient note. Uh, uh, for a waiver of a hundred foot instead of the hundred and fifty required.
Just, I think that has to come with it.
That has to come with that.
Right, we, it requires a letter, a sample, that's.
A letter.
Request the waiver.
A letter for the waiver to from one hundred, uh, uh, to one hundred from one fifty. As per subdivision.
Right, so.
Downspouts, uh, mitigation on a water stream buffer. Uh, the strip of land, ten feet, uh, non-mowed from the edge of the woods shown both on the plan and noted on the plan. A note that uh depicts a hundred year floodplain may exist and any future owners, uh. Uh, take notice and uh appropriate proportions. Uh, and a calculation area of disturbance, uh, to ensure a swift permit is not needed on the plan.
Okay, and uh, but the well?
On the left, yeah.
The well?
The well?
And the well.
Yes.
It is.
We even talked about that like ten times, how did it forget that?
It is far enough, hundred fifty feet as well. But you're right on the edge, so they don't protect when they drill, there will that.
But we only have to be a hundred. Okay, well, he suggested to go more than a hundred to a hundred fifty.
Yeah.
It's not a required.
Yeah, but the hundred fifty were, if you put a weight in that water.
We like to make, we like to make everybody happy, especially the board help.
Okay.
Given that my wife.
Yeah, but I know she throws axes, see, I'm not too bad.
Alright, so we need a motion, so a motion for sketch plan approval first.
Oh.
Second.
Well, it's gonna be sketch plan and. Ready to get inside, let's subject to.
Do it.
Conditional by final.
Individually, so that we can.
Okay.
Make sure that. Okay, um, and then a finding that it's a type two action?
Motion? Second.
Favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
Pass the sixth on.
And then lastly, can I hear a motion to authorize Joe Crocco to sign the resolution? And the map, subject to the conditions that was.
I make a motion to.
Second.
Hold on a favor.
Hi.
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 Okay, that is. This is nothing. So, they're all dead. Put it out. So. Be good, as soon as you get me the map, I'll come over here and sign it, review it and sign it, and sign the resolution.
I'll send you, I'll send you a PDF, you can take a look at it and then.
Oh, yeah, yes.
And then if you have any comments or excerpts, I can maybe know change or.
Yeah, email them, yeah. Use here. Okay. If that's it for the new business. Now we have to discuss the proposed local law number one. Twenty twenty three. Is everybody familiar with it? Get a chance to look at it?
Hold on, grab it.
This is the March line.
Yeah, this is on hospitality uses.
Yeah.
So I guess the town board has decided to institute a moratorium on. Um, hospitality uses that are indicated in the zoning ordinance. Um, which will include short term builds. Um, I guess hotel, motel, anything that where you can. Um, domicile yourself, will be included, so I don't know, you can notes that. That the gist of the chat? That's generally the gist of it. Thoughts, comments, suggestions?
I'm wondering.
Because a ho- a hotel room is a short term rental by the building. Twenty to thirty day is considered a short term rental at its different requirements in the building.
Okay.
Yeah, and you could build the site with a bunch of short term rentals.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, short term rentals, but for the most part, that would tell rooms.
So, so would this include the regular one family short term rentals like we're seeing?
If you still can rent your house, if you want to rent your house for, you know, a year or so, I don't think that's.
Long time.
Long term rentals isn't effective, but. I guess the mor- moratorium won't preclude us, you know, reviewing or approving any site plan. That have those uses incorporated in them, so.
I disagree with the law because like some of these short term rentals will become for renewal, will that include them in it if it be normal?
That's a good point, I don't know, get about renewals.
I, I read it.
Renewals are not.
They're already existing, so.
Yeah, I think that's at the end.
I know.
At the very end.
Yeah.
I mean, my recollection is we should have quite a few renewals coming up.
Yeah, we could be getting. And the moratorium is for what?
Nine.
Six after nine, but I'm gonna look at.
Somehow I remembered nine, so maybe it was six with three extension.
Yes, because there was the ability to extend it.
I'll make sure it's six and not nine, but.
Yeah.
So in that time, I guess the town board and the consultants will be reviewing the law to see. What is a concern and now will adjust it according or make suggestions to adjust the zoning ordinance. Accordingly to. That are defined. These hospitality uses. Now, exactly. So. Any other questions, thoughts, ideas? Yeah. It is a concern.
Joe, you're flat.
For nine months.
It is, March Brian will be in a period of nine months. New effective date, and then if this is this month, be extended by two additional periods up to six months, so that's where we're gonna be satisfied.
My first rec election will be right for some reason.
Yeah, it's, it starts at nine and then it can be, it can be extended for another twelve in six month periods.
I don't like narrows, short term rentals. And the renewal of the music is one of the violations, pretty broken. So, anything else tonight, Jay? So just to hold everyone informally, generally in favor?
Yeah, yeah.
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 By. Next Friday, the tenth, so then I can draft the letter for the town board for their meeting on the sixteen. Yeah, it was just one of the things I had mentioned to Jay. Um, on Carson Road, we had an application coming up on its two year anniversary. And it's proceeding very slowly and they never finished their. Site plan because they never got back to us on their set that we gave them an approval conditional on that. Um, they've abused the, the, the erosion control, so. And they also purchased three more acres, so I think it's time for them to get notified to. Return here to finish their site plan, who if they're merging three acres, should know what they're doing with it. And we should also know what they did with their set deck because we have no record of anything. When we do reach out to them appropriately, ask them to. Oh, it's there, yeah.
Well, they have a CO.
No.
So how big a building for that?
No, that we, we gave them the opportunity to get the building permit, subject to them solving. It was a tear down for the most part, so we gave them the opportunity, they didn't know when they were accepted. But since the time that they came in front of us, they purchased three acres from pulver on the south side. They've always been lax in their erosion control. They're stirring up the site again, they're almost dried in on the outside of the building, but not quite, but they started to stir up the site and. They should get their act together and. You know, I told me. They have not disturbed over anything. At that, you know, it was pretty stable. Because it was dry and then it gotten grown, weeds grew in, but now they started turning it up again and the mud's appearing and. You know, they could be CO'd or getting close to getting this, you know, they're working on the interior, but I don't know how close they are, but. You know, we, we gave them the benefit of the doubt and, you know, we just want them to finish their application. Because it is coming up on their two year anniversary, it's March twenty one. And we get approval, so. Or slips through the cracks, I just think we should notify them, ask them to return and give us the rest of their. So, no, any thoughts?
They also, um, that house on Simon Road, it's up above a pond. And there's something, I can throw by there and there's something, but it's not brown.
Yeah, that.
I don't know how we follow up on that.
Somebody does.
They have a big pile there and there is still.
If you don't, you know, there's no enforcement, then what we do is dissents us because it just gets abused.
What you can do is you can actually do like a complaint to the officer, it's not his radar. If you saw some. See you tomorrow, please.
Yeah.
Um, to be to do that, just a quick.
Okay.
You know, a lot of times the silt fences just don't get installed properly in the first.
Broke down and then it's out there. But there's a steady kind of body of water at the bottom.
And they do work, they do work if they're installed, you'll see the silt running, preventing from going into the water, way or that. It is a good protection, so I mean, it should be maintained during construction. That being said, I don't have anything else, nobody else does. No one's being very upset.
Nope.
Take a motion.
Oh. Okay.
That's talking, that's keeping your record.
Alright, very nice.